Hello, everyone. I'm Michael Riley, Chairman of the Towne Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome to the regular meeting of May the 15th, 2025. It is 7:04 PM, and this meeting is now in session. Please stand and join in the pleasure allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Who are going to seat one alternate tonight? And that is Donald.
Yes, sir.
Donald. So we'll call the roll, starting with Dominic.
The seated alternate commissioner, Dominic Smigalina.
Diana Brozzi, Commissioner.
Bruno Maetti, Commissioner.
Robert Weslon, Commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, Alternate Commissioner.
Kathleen Gallagher, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Okay, next on the agenda is general public participation. If there's anyone here online that would like to address the commission on any issues that are not on the agenda, please raise your hand.
And when we say raise your hand, raise your hand function, which is a button, or if you're called in, star nine.
Okay, I don't see any hands online, and there's no one in person. So we'll go ahead with, are we going to go with public hearing, or?
Yes, yes. So you guys are ready for 64 Cambridge? Yeah, they're good.
All right. We're going to start with the first public hearing. That's EFP 2023-04A1. Pardon, number 115, 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive. We, I believe, we opened this hearing last meeting. I'm going to continue it today. Do you have any new exhibits?
Yes.
But we didn't go any further. We didn't hear any.
Since our last meeting on the 15th, the certificate of mailings were presented to us at the meeting on May 15th by Solely Engineering. The town engineer submitted comments, May 14th, 2025. James De Mayo and Solely Engineering submitted revised plans, which is Exhibit 10, document dated May 14th, 2025.
Okay. Can we see who's online?
Yes, so I believe the intervenor is online via Zoom. And there's several, there's an iPhone, Paul's iPad, and there's a journalist.
All right. For behalf of the committee.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, this is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering, in right here in Monroe, at 11 Main Street. We'll call up the, oh.
Yes, so sorry.
So we're here tonight to talk about a modification to due excavation fill permit that was granted in, or 2023-04-81. Thankfully, this, I believe this entire commission is very familiar with this application, this project, this property, the history behind that. I'm going to go through kind of why we're here. And I have a high, I keep it to a high level presentation and kind of fill you in on some of the discussions we've been having with the wetlands commission and kind of give you some feedback from the commission on that.
And I'm, I'm so sorry. I'm going to do a little bit of housekeeping first. So just a reminder, you guys were on for the opening of the public hearing, May 1st, but per your request, it was continued to this application. So is the public hearing notice there? I believe it is. I would still like it read into the record because I don't believe we read it into the record. It would have been where Ryan was sitting.
Where Ryan sits.
Yeah, you could read that into the record. I'm so sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. I just don't want to.
No, you're okay. Thank you.
All right. Planning and zoning commission Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held on May the 1st, 2025 in accordance with CGS Paragraph 8-7D. A public hearing will be held on Thursday, May the 1st, 2025, at 7:00 PM or sooner or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting at blah, blah, blah. And in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall, Council Chamber, 7th Avenue, Monroe, concerning following EFP 2023-04-81, file number 115, 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive. Application for a permit approval modification to reduce net fill quantity and modify the method of wetland restoration. This is MAP 95, lot 15/00 and 15/28 Astro Land Holdings LLC and Spacey Land Holdings LLC. Applicant, Mary Blackburn, Solely Engineering LLC representative.
So we never opened the public hearing, which means we actually never read any of these exhibits in the record. So Exhibit 1 is the application and plan set by Solely Engineering. Exhibit 2 is the Town of Monroe, James De Mayo's engineering comments. For 3, 2025. Exhibit 3 is the planning and zoning administrators memo by myself dated April 14th, 2025. Exhibit 4 is the Health Department comments. Exhibit 5 is the EMS comments. Exhibit 6 is response comments from Solely Engineering. Exhibit 7 is, there's extension letter by Solely Engineering. Exhibit 8 is the certificate of mailings. Exhibit 9 is the Town of Monroe's engineers' revised comments, and 10 is the revised plans. So sorry, now we're good.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your diligence. So, excited to talk about our two in the Pepper Tree Business Park, so the 4 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive. The property has had some extensive history and some recent approvals with both this well, this commission and the wetlands commission. So just to kind of rehash it for everyone at a very high level. In 2006, an approval was granted for two industrial buildings. The previous owner, not the current applicant, then began excavating the site, over-examinated the site, and left it in a pretty tenuous condition. Our clients acquired the property in 2019. After their acquisition, the Wetlands Commission issued a notice of violation. In our analysis and through meeting with the Wetlands Commission and this commission, we determined that the best way to address the wetland impacts were to fill the site, raise the elevation, and restore some watershed to be wetlands along the eastern side of the property. Actually, after the, so, commission's probably very familiar and remembers this fondly through the many, many hearings that we had. The excavation and fill permit was approved. The wetlands restoration application was approved. Both applications received opposition from an intervenor who had filed on all the applications. And I believe all that information in previous testimony is part of this record because this is a modification to those approvals. So we have the benefit of that, of the rehash of everything. But obviously, the initial planning and zoning approval was appealed. That appeal was upheld through some kind of flaws that were in the planning and zoning regulations regarding waivers. The applicant then secured the necessary areas as part of the zoning board of appeals. And then this commission addressed those conditions of excavation and fill permit that the judge deemed beyond the limits of what's the set is authorized. So we are in a great position now, both this commission and the town in general, that everything is in a good, strong working place. So any application before without the threat of those appeals. So the previous approval proposed to basically clean up the site, restore all the stockpiles that were there, place the excavated material into the deeper reaches of the hole to the northern end of the property, fill the grade, and then import approximately 490,000 cubic yards of material to raise the elevation in the northernmost part of the site in this location here, to raise the elevation for independence so that it restores natural watershed to feed the eastern wetland systems with a much higher elevation than the balance of the land through this area here. So we're here tonight to modify our excavation and fill permit. Over the past several years, it is deemed to be essentially, not only difficult, but essentially impossible to source clean fill that exceeded the definition from DEEP but met the strict protocols that we worked diligently with this commission regarding the intake material protocol. So because that's been so challenging, we made an application to the Wetlands Commission to modify that restoration approval to essentially ask that we would no longer have to import that material, essentially leave the site in the condition that it is today, and to provide a permanent rehydration approach to this eastern wetland system by installing wells and pumps, groundwater wells and pumps, to pump water into that wetland system and to mimic the previous rainfall and to reestablish that wetland as more vibrant and restore vertical. Now, the reason that we feel comfortable with this is that during the process, while the site was being cleaned up and pumped as part of the previous approval, we did have authorization and approval to rehydrate those wetlands using pumps. And our wetland scientists, after doing an investigation, found that that wetland actually improved its functionality. There was evidence of vertical pool allogite species and egg masses. So it was determined that the rehydration via pumping was a viable solution to restore that wetland system. So that brings us that couple of the fact that it's incredibly challenging to find and source this clean fill that meets the criteria with the intake protocol. We felt this was the best approach because this allows us to have a modified excavation and fill permit, which we can then close out because we believe we've met essentially the conditions or the conditions that would be established as part of this reapproval. That will allow us to install the permanent wells for rehydration, and it would also allow for the site to be essentially a new application to come in before this commission for proposed development, which I think is, was an ultimate goal of not only the applicant, but also, we believe, the Town of Monroe to actually have this to be a more productive piece of property in the community, contributing to tax base, et cetera. So the reason we continued the hearing from before the last one that was supposed to open at the previous meeting, we wanted to continue it because we were, we had our first wetlands public hearing. Wetlands Commission wanted to schedule a site walk before their next hearing, which was last night. We had that site walk, we had the hearing last night. And through those discussions, there were a number of comments raised and discussions had. I do want to run through them, just to kind of give this continuing benefit of kind of a virtual walkthrough of the site so you guys can see how significantly improved it is from the last time this property was formed. So this is just a picture of the vertical pool and the wetland system to the east that's up on top of the hill. You can see that there's, it's a very vibrant system now.
When were these pictures taken?
These pictures were taken earlier this spring. So just another picture of that wetland system up on the top of the hill. This is a picture from Independence Drive, the municipal detention basin that accommodates stormwater from the, from the Pepper Tree Business Park subdivision. Basically, it's kind of right to my right here. And this is kind of looking south towards the property. You can see that all the, you know, all the piles that were there previously have been gone through and placed and compacted. And it's really done a tremendous job of cleaning up the property. This is the municipal detention basin. This is looking essentially west to east. Independence Drive is up on your left. You can see that, if you recall, this was a much, much different disposed groundwater, and it's all been filled in clean with all, you know, pre-nated material. Just, this is actually, this is looking towards the west from the eastern edge, that rock face is kind of behind in this location. Just another site looking east to west, or a bit further south on the property. You can see one set up here. This was where there was a stockpile that was removed. This was actually one of the detention basins that was on the property. Another sedimentation basin in the south-eastern corner of the edge of the previously disturbed areas. And then just some of the existing stockpiles that still remain, which were designed to remain because the intent was to use those in future redevelopment efforts. So that's, so our application essentially is to modify the ENF permit to eliminate the requirement, to import all that material, to essentially allow us to maintain the site at its current elevation. There's still some minor things that we're proposing to do in terms of some landscaping plantings and some additional stormwater measures. And we revised plans that that was submitted yesterday. It was really in response to the second round of comments from the town engineer. So, and your plan set is a very detailed set of drawings that shows and calls out all of these various components that we're proposing to modify with this permit application. But one of the things that we talked about at the wetlands hearing last night, and the main reason why we wanted to kind of come before you, even though we haven't finished there, was as we're talking about the installation of the wells to provide a permanent measure for the rehydration of the wetlands, you know, there was still some discussion about, you know, why we can't find the material. And I don't believe our LEP is on this evening, but it can certainly be available for a future meeting. But because of the strict protocols that we created through extensive discussion, essentially, the, all the material that has come available didn't meet that criteria. And one of the things that the Wetlands Commission said, well, is there a way we can reduce those standards in the material intake protocol, still meet the definition of clean fill by DEEP? We can install the wells, but we can also still try to seek and find that material. The biggest challenge with that that we explained to them is this commission controls that material intake protocol. So we can't finish a process with the Wetlands Commission with something that may not be acceptable to this commission. One of the things that we suggested last night, and I'm not sure if this is possible, but a potential productive way to address this was to see if we could schedule a special meeting where both commissions can hear the application at the same time, and each commission can have an offer discussion and ask questions of both the applicant, the intervenor, the general public, to see if there is a way that we could develop either a protocol that is acceptable or come up with another alternative. So we kind of wanted to, you know, offer that high level overview of where we are, why we're here, and what we're looking for. And I guess solicit some feedback from the commission. Also with me here this evening is Paul Stone from the applicant and attorney Steve Finn, representing the applicant.
Do you have the chart poll available?
Um, I, I don't have it, uh, I don't, I may have a slide of it. I'm not sure, I may have a slide, but it's certainly something that we can discuss. And the main thing that we did was we took the definition of clean fill by DEEP, except the component of kind of clean asphalt fragments, we struck. And we struck that up after extensive discussion, but as we've been attempting to source material, a lot of that material has asphalt fragments in it. Again, it's still clean based on DEEP criteria, but it was not consistent with what we established as the first go around with the commission. So I think Yanakins was trying to coordinate with our LEP to offer similar guidance on one of the modifications, if any, we want to propose to that protocol, to get to a place where both this commission could be comfortable and Wetlands Commission could be comfortable. But the main reason we're here is because we wanted to provide this update, give a high level overview of why we're here, talk about some of the challenges that we've been facing since this permit was approved.
Steve, to add a commentary.
Good evening, members of the convention. It's been a while since I've been before you. I'm going to be relatively brief. I just want to provide a little bit more detail. Kevin mentioned that we have an LEP who has been working with us. His name is Derek Jones. He's a licensed geologist, and he's a licensed Connecticut environmental professional. He wrote a letter that's been submitted to Inland Wetlands and has not been submitted to you yet, but we certainly can get it to you that I do think sort of explains what the problem is with fill. So it's about a one-page letter. I'm going to read it to you slowly. And I think that will sort of illustrate what the real problem is here. So, the letter is addressed to whom it may concern. WSP USA Inc. has prepared this letter to document the ongoing difficulty in identifying acceptable material for fill import at the assemblage of land known as 64 Cambridge and 4 Independence Drive in Monroe. As you know, the restoration and remediation plan approved by the Inland Wetlands Commission on September 22nd, 2021, and the excavation and fill permit approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 7th, 2023 for the site included the placement of an estimated 493,000 cubic yards of fill. A material acceptance procedure dated August 2020 is part of the approved plans and delineates the requirements and the procedure for accepting or not any imported material to the site. Material acceptance procedure includes a rigorous sampling, an analytical probe called to demonstrate that any imported material meets the definition of clean fill as well as an onerous certification required. In addition, the excavation of fill permit lists asphalt as a prohibited intake material, further reducing available suitable material. Unfortunately, given the extended commercial and industrial history of Connecticut and surrounding areas, urban development projects that are most abundant resource for fill materials in our region invariably exhibit detectable pollutants that provide evidence of release. Evidence of release would likely result in the material failing to meet the material acceptance procedure, which therefore severely limits the fill available for placement at the site. Based on our experiences with material acceptance applications for this site, one can estimate that the filling anticipated under the existing redevelopment plan would require decades to complete. So that's the opinion of a licensed environmental professional who is used to working on fill projects.
Does evidence of release mean?
Evidence of release of harmful contaminants.
So could you just read that sentence?
I'd be happy to, when we find it. Evidence of a release, meaning?
Before that also, that whole sentence.
Okay.
It's a runoff.
Let me go back and make it clear, all right?
Yeah, it's actually a runoff.
Maybe it's the reading. In addition, the excavation and fill permit lists asphalt as a prohibited intake material, further reducing available suitable material. Unfortunately, given the extended commercial and industrial history of Connecticut and surrounding areas, urban redevelopment projects that are most abundant, that are the most abundant resource for fill materials in our region invariably exhibit detectable pollutants that provide evidence of release. I assume that means, Kevin, release of harmful contaminants into the soil. That will.
I'll zoom in this. Basically, whether there's lots of pump from around is relevant.
Yeah, my interpretation would be, I think it's been proven in the opportunity to help themselves. It's, any export site has some of those components. They either have some asphalt fragments in them or something else, or they're strictly adhered to our protocol. Yeah, that's proven that this material is.
So continuing on, evidence of release would likely result in the material failing to meet the material acceptance procedure.
Thank you. That was all I needed to talk about.
And then just to provide additional corroboration, you may recall that this commission hired an independent expert, a guy named Bill Hyple of NSAES. That gentleman was hired jointly by this commission and the Inland Wetlands Commission to monitor this project. And he made reports to this commission. And so we went back and we found some minutes of his presentation to this commission. The minutes are from your meeting of May 4th, 2023. And there's a summary of what Mr. Hyple said at that meeting, which I'm happy to provide to you. But the relevant point for the topic we're discussing now is this one, one or two sentences from the minutes. Commissioner Maetti asked if Mr. Hyple's observation of the site was complete. Mr. Hyple stated, "The current contract expires at the end of June." I was to observe the imported fill. He explained that the owner is currently having trouble finding suitable fill." That was back in May of 2023. And that has continued, unfortunately, to be the case, that the material acceptance procedure that this commission placed has been so stringent that it's been virtually impossible to find fill to meet the criteria. And that is corroborated by our LEP and by, to some extent, Mr. Hyple. Now, just by way of background, we started off this procedure with a restoration order from Inland Wetlands. Went to Inland Wetlands, we got a permit to restore. Took us two trials, but we got a permit to restore. The Inland Wetlands sort of delegated to the Planning and Zoning Commission the aspects of the actual fill project because we had to come to you for an excavation and fill project permit. And it was this commission, within its rightful purview, that placed the material acceptance procedure. Now, I'm sure you all remember that there was lengthy testimony from the intervenors' experts, and there were concerns raised by one or two commissioners about the quality of the fill being brought to this site. Therefore, in the end, and with frankly, the acquiescence of the applicant, all right, we're going to give you a belt and suspenders material acceptance procedure. Even though DEEP allows asphalt to be part of clean fill, we're not going to include asphalt. We did that voluntarily because we wanted to persuade everybody's concerns. It seems to me that it's that extra criteria of barring asphalt that is causing a significant problem in getting the fill. And now we find ourselves, pardon the pun, we find ourselves between a rock and a hard place. We go down, we went to the Inland Wetlands Commission and say, look, we filled up the property with clean fill. It was supervised by an independent inspector, given a clean bill, but we've run out of the ability to get more fill. And so remember, the idea was to raise the property up to a certain level to restore sheet flow, to restore this one wetland that was damaged. We can't now find enough fill to establish reliable sheet flow. But in the interim, we have been able to show that pumping water into this wetland will restore it. So our pending amendment before the IWC is, let us stop filling and let us just hydrate this wetland with oil on a permanent basis. They're interested in that, but they're, they would prefer, and we understand that, they would prefer to have natural sheet flow rehydrating this wetland. That is the best way to rehydrate a wetland. It's not to pump water, it's to establish sheet flow. They said, look, maybe you can reduce the stringency of the material acceptance procedure. Find enough fill and bring the property back up, okay? So who controls the stringency of the material acceptance procedure? You all. So it's sort of been, look back to you. We're, as I said, between a rock and a hard place. We can't change the material acceptance procedure to lower the standards to satisfy what the IWC does unless you give us permission to adjust the material acceptance procedure. So I think, and I think a lot of us think, that the best approach here is to get both commissions together in one or two meetings, okay? Otherwise, we're going to be bouncing back and forth, take forever. I know Kathleen has started exploring the possibility of that. Hasn't come to any firm conclusion yet. But I think it's such a more efficient way to proceed. So I'm going to leave that with you at this point. The only thing I'll say to you is that the Inland Wetlands Commission wanted a site visit, which was held about a week and a half or so ago. If you all want a site visit, we're happy to arrange it. You can see what this, maybe you already know how we think they've done a great job with the fill they had and bringing this whole back to something that looks pretty decent. But if you all want to come out and see it, please, let's schedule a site visit. We'd love to have you come out and see it. That's sort of it in a nutshell.
Thank you. The way the site is now, is it developable?
Well, it is. And actually, the applicant has received inquiries from interested partners who wanted to develop. And that kind of created the impetus where we wouldn't even be able to bring in a special acceptance permit for this commission to consider because we would have to close out the excavation and fill permit first. So that's why our solution was, well, let's remove the requirement for the additional fill, give us an opportunity to find some tenants to bring in some applications before you. And that's, that's how we started on this panel.
Are you required to bring in that amount?
As of right now, the current.
Needed, which you.
Correct.
Don't.
We don't. We would need it to rehydrate the wetland if we wanted to raise the grade to provide sheet flow. But we believe we've. provide sheet flow, but we believe, we've, you know, we've been able to document that, that wetland restoration effort can be achieved through.
Thank you, Mr. Soli. Let's have the intervenor, if he'd like to address the commission. We've been instructed by our council that the intervenor has status in this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission staff. My name is Joel Green. I practice on Bridgeport with the law offices of Creighton Gross. It's my pleasure to appear before you this evening on behalf of Peter Metropolis trustee, who is the owner of the budding, I believe, 47 acres at 36 Timothy Hill Road. Obviously, we've all spent a lot of time together on this project in the past. You know, we find ourselves in an interesting position and the applicant sort of now, I think, shifting their position a little bit, which we're encouraged by because I think, and I won't go too deeply into the history, but recall that this site was heavily overexcavated. And while the applicant continues to say that it was by a previous owner, the truth is that the applicants continued to use the site and exceeding the permits that were issued to the point where there was a notice violation issued and then a cease and desist six months and more after this applicant owned the property. So, and I discussed this with inland wetlands last night. I said basically, here you have savvy real estate investors here and these applicants. And certainly, they came to this site, they saw the condition of this site, presumably they bought this site at a fair value based on its impaired state, the fact that it had been overexcavated and there was a problem here. So presumably, they bought it for a very favorable price due to the condition of the property, and they continued to operate it. And in fact, I believe the principal of New England Materials, who had overexcavated the site before them, was actually consulting with these applicants after they owned the site. And we went through that long process before this commission, and this applicant appeared before this commission and presented what they said was the best plan for restoring this property and curing the overexcavation of the site, filling the site. And I know many of you sat for these dozens and dozens of hours where we, you know, certainly had a spirited debate, and ultimately, a decision was made for this restoration plan. Now, the applicant comes before you and says, and by the way, we obviously, we went through the appeals and we went through a second, ultimately, an excavation fill permit that was approved, the applicant continued to work the site and fill the site. And now they're just under 500,000 yards short on what they said they would do to naturally restore the wetlands. I remember being before the commission, I remember the chair making the comment about no asphalt in the, in the fill because there was obviously concern about making sure the fill was clean and that the site was restored as best you can. So we believe that really what's happened now is, and my client has done some preliminary investigation, we think that you can get fill, it's just a matter of the economics. It's the cost of getting fill, and the cost of getting fill that meets the rigorous standards that the applicant kept referring to with this commission and assuring the commission that this was a good plan because of this rigorous material acceptance protocol that they had. And now, at least, and by the way, as part of this plan, whether the site is developable, you will recall that this commission amended its regulations and took out your steep slopes. So now you're faced with a site that has really steep slopes on it, and I believe the town engineer said that they're between 10 and 30 feet in some places because the site just hasn't been filled. So on a lot of levels, this is a cause for concern. First of all, I think it sets a terrible precedent where, you know, you have basically a huge violation here, and the applicant is now asking for forgiveness, and it sets a bad precedent for anyone who exceeds the permits, and this is probably the largest violation in the history of this town. We are skeptical of this plan to refill the wetlands using a mechanical pumping system. And I think some of the comments by the inland wetlands commission, and I think staff can certainly speak to that, but there were comments of concern, sort of using a mechanical method rather than creating a natural gravitational flow gradient that naturally replenishes the wetland. So that was a topic of discussion last night. But I think the big points are, first of all, my client believes that this is more a matter of economics than the unavailability of fill, and it becomes a matter of these applicants or business people wanting to stop now so that they have less expense in the property and so that they can sell the property now at a greater economic gain. And I'm not sure that that forms a great basis for action by this commission. So what we're saying basically now is, and this was expressed by the inland wetlands last night, is first of all, let's really understand what the market is like for fill and what's really, what the true state of the market is. And my client is, and I offered last night to inland wetlands, we'll look into fill, we'll, we'll cooperate with the applicant. Are we open potentially to a discussion on changing the protocol if that's what it takes to restore this site in a, in a manner that is still, still respective of the environmental issues? Yeah, I mean, I think there's a discussion to be had on that. But we would urge the commission sort of at this juncture and based on the state of this application and based on one statement basically by WSP and some statements by the applicants that it's difficult to get fill, to sort of say, you know, don't worry about the 400 and some amount, close to 500,000 yards of fill, don't worry about it. I don't think that would be, we would urge the commission not to go down that road without a really robust record. It's really, that's where we really are then, there's a discussion to be had. But based on the state of the record, that can't be determined at this point. So that's all that I really have to say tonight. I won't take up any more of the commission's time. I don't know if there are questions, any?
Thank you. Yeah, if the commission has any questions at this point from either the intervenor or the applicant, let's go ahead.
Yeah, to the applicant. So how far along are you guys from the original grade? How, how high have you gotten?
So the, the existing, the former grade in the northernmost portion of the site is now at elevation around four or three eighty-two. That's been raised up to elevation 420. So we're, you know, very in grade to support the plant, so don't want to speak, but we're around 428 or so. Because some of those part of the site, the number one most part of the site is around 422.
And what was it? I didn't hear that.
It was about 382, 382. We placed about 40 feet of fill for an independent tribe to raise that up to a grade where we have, you know, much improved condition. And that was really just by kicking and cleaning the process of the material that was on site and placing the fill, which was all observed via the third-party inspector, Bill Hyple from NSA.
So then that's about 40 feet from the water table because that, because we were at the water table at that point?
Correct. I believe the, yeah, I believe your water table is around 411. So we're about, you know, we're probably 110 feet above where that water.
No more questions at this point?
So on the clean fill, as you were discussing, you said you just talked to whoever the expert that said that, even if you found clean fill, it probably wouldn't meet, like you said, there would be a release of any kind of, even if you, if we dropped the standards, and obvious that before, with the standards from Connecticut, if your expert's saying that the clean fill would probably show a release, that's hard to get fill without a release, that, that we can't have asphalt or anything like that. And the other thing is, I thought that asphalt is clean only if it's four inches in diameter or bigger.
Correct. So asphalt fragments are clean fill, and they're used as clean fill.
Four inches are big, so.
Correct. But, but a lot of those, so any DOT project, they're doing work on 84 or 25 or 91, and they're, they're doing excavation or doing something like that, a lot of times that material would meet the definition of clean fill, but we can't accept it. So there's been a couple, I believe there's been a couple opportunities, you know, 20, 30,000 yards of material that was available, but it didn't meet our criteria, so the applicant had to pass.
Has your applicant filled any other sites in this town?
Yeah, they, 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 they're, they filled it or in the process of filling 10 thirties of the nature.
So what's the difference with this property?
Can I, you still have a question?
Well, you take vertical.
Well, you're in a GAA water site over here.
It's still clean fill.
Still didn't meet, like you even said, if the particles that came in there didn't meet clean fill, your expert just said it would show a release. Right? That's what he just said. That's what he said. That was my question.
I, I do think, I think maybe the question is, is can you have your expert?
Yeah.
You know, look at it in the sense of, I, I don't know the context of which they were looking at it and if they were just looking at, in general, the general fill that we find in the area in the region, those evidence of release?
Yeah.
I think, is that everything, including what would meet, you know, the definition of, of clean fill by deep, or?
I think, I think what I?
Is that anything of a lower status?
Is to offer a revised protocol so this is the mission to consider with the, to go along with some expert customer, by an LEP who can speak to it better.
I didn't watch, so what, they're sort of concerned about your pumping system and the water that's around them, but that who's going to maintain that over the years?
Well, like, like anything, it would be a condition of approval, and if that, and if that well wasn't maintained and we didn't.
Saying, you're talking for the life of whatever.
Well, right, so, so, so pumps are very common. A lot of commercial projects have pumps for their settling systems, a lot of residential homes have some pumps. And the, what we're proposing is to establish and install pumps today, that can be solar powered with battery backup and can be monitored remotely via wifi and things like that with a bi-monthly inspection of those wells to ensure that they're functioning and operable, and then for, for at least the first season, and then monthly inspections thereafter. And ultimately, when a project comes before this commission that includes a building, that pump would be wired into that building system as pumps are wired into building systems every day. So there's, there will always be a responsible party, whether it's the current owner or a future owner, and there are countless means in which that can be enforced through conditions by both the wetlands commission and this commission.
Well, I think that, you know, like people brought up now that maybe the wetlands and this commission should be speaking together somehow to try to come to a?
Which, which was?
I would think that because they're, I think that they really want, the way I, because your expert even said, the wetlands guy said that pumping the water in it is not like the regular sheet flow that would hydrate those wetlands and really, you know, they said, you know, pumping groundwater into it is not the way to really do it.
Well, I don't believe he said?
I thought that some of, have some of those people, they had concerns about that. So I mean, I think that we need to, we need to get it with, I mean, the fill part of it is if, if, if you can do something with the wetlands and some of them, I mean, I'm not into taking any more fill if I didn't have to because I don't want dirty fill coming into this town. But so, I mean, I don't want to change my protocol on fill because you're in a GAA water site, I really don't want to do that. Doesn't work. But that's what I might.
So the steep slope issue is, how would you mitigate that with developing the property as is?
Well, we did preclude a letter from a G-technical engineer when I did inspection of those faces. Those faces are stable. There are some pockets where there's some larger rocks overhanging, and his recommendation would be those, those don't pose a risk today, but in future development applications, it may be something that want to be, would want to be cleaned up. But the balance of the steep slopes, you know, vertical rock faces exist, both commercially made and natural. So we don't believe those are really concerned, it's about the structural integrity of that to ensure that there's, you know, safety measures in place.
And stupid question, but that, the only way you can rehydrate is, is from the east?
Well?
At the north and the south, I mean, and the east?
Sure, so.
At the top of a hill?
So, so there is a ridge line, actually, there's a valley, basically runs in between these two well ponds. So this system runs south to north into a larger well pond up here. This system runs north to south. So there is a slight valley here. This has a large watershed which contributes from the east. This formerly had a larger watershed that is a ridge ran basically through the middle of the site. So the former watershed, which was excavated, provided some capture and the collection of rainwater which filled this system from, or from west to east. So in fact, that the excavation occurred, that was again, our initial proposal was to provide enough fill up here, so this material, this, this future rainwater would be rather this way to provide some of that hydration.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
A quick question, where, where is the intervenor's property in relation to the wetlands?
Here.
I just have a couple of quick?
Sure.
Thank you. I know it's a while ago, but the, the intervenor's position is, it's, it's interesting to say the least because for many, many meetings before you, they previously argued they didn't want to see any fill collected this property. You may recall that Mr. Metropolis was on the line at one point, he said, well, what do you want us to happen with the property? I want to see it turned into a lake. He didn't want any fill because he was afraid about the contaminants. Now he's, now his attorney is saying, oh, no, no, we want that property filled all the way up. So just, just keep that in, in mind about how these positions have been shifted and on, on this from the intervenor. Now, you know, we've been, Mr. Green, Attorney Green has said that, you know, we presented the plan to you as the best plan. Sorry, that's, that's not true. Not true. We presented a plan to you that we thought was most expeditious to trying to get this property and the wetlands restored in a relatively quick fashion. And so we talked about finding this fill. Look, we're not saying it's impossible to find any fill that meets the criteria, but what we are saying is that our experience to date has been it's very hard to find it and that it's going to take decades to find 453,000 cubic yards of fill. So it's not just a question of finding, it's the timing, okay? And the other thing I want to let you know is that when the plan, the last plan was proposed to you, there was, as I mentioned, a big question mark about whether artificially rewriting, rehydrating this wetland would be successful. We've had the benefit of pumping into the wetlands and it has proven to show that it does restore the wetlands. Again, we admit it's not the optimal plan, it's not the best plan, but it does restore the wetlands. So we have to balance all these different interests, interests in it now. So the other thing I want to say, and then I'll, I'll conclude, is that Attorney Green started quoting to you what the inland wetlands commission said last night. Look, I don't agree with his recollection of exactly what was said by individual commissioners last night, but it proves the point that it would be best to have these commissions meet together, okay? So you can hear each other directly rather than having me tell you what they said or Attorney Green tell you what they said. Like you can hear for yourselves, you can corroborate together with the commission. Like you can hear for yourselves, you can corroborate together with the commissions and hopefully come up with a solution that's acceptable to both commissions. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Chair is recognizing Commissioner Mayini at this point. Commissioner Mayini, you have questions?
Yeah. So how much time is left on your permit?
Uh, the last one was issued in two thousand and twenty-three, so I leave, uh, leave the period where it's put, leave there to be nine years left. Because I believe the reapproval was done in two thousand and twenty-three, correct? All correct?
And you could get an extension on that, too?
Okay.
So you could, in theory, fill it within your timeframe, right?
With Finding material, yes.
That's, that's a great point. So you can't find material for this site, but if I'm not mistaken, that Route twenty-five or, yeah, the Route twenty-five site's still owned by the same owner? And that one is getting, constantly getting deliveries of?
I wouldn't say constantly.
Well,
As a parcel to the south.
I will say that I drive on that, I drive on that road probably up and down it maybe ten times a day. And there's a huge amount of fill that was just delivered within the last
This property or
On twenty-five.
South, the seven one eighty, uh, Main Street, four Main Street.
Thirty-six Main Street? Talking about?
Because there's, there's two properties on, there's, there's three properties on Main Street, two are owned by this applicant, I've been at the fill permit approval, and there's another parcel to the south, which is owned by someone independent who is importing
Right. That's the half Trumbull, half LeRouge. Right. No, it's on, it's on this site. So, so if that fill is good enough for that site, why has it not been enough for the other site? And if we're finding stuff that has contaminants in it? Or potential contaminants in it, why is it here?
I, I
On a different
I am not, I am, I've made no representations that there's any contaminated or impacted materials brought to you.
I believe, I believe you
I believe the L P made a statement that most urban areas in Lower Fairfield County, all of those sites were previously developed or, or impacted. Some of the materials that had been made available potentially for this site didn't meet the protocol. But I, but again, I can't
Why is it on twenty-five?
I'm not saying it is. I'm not saying that material that didn't pass sixty-four Cambridge was then imported in ten thirty-six. I'm not making that statement or representation at all. I don't believe that's been represented here.
No, but I'm, but what I'm saying is there's fill there that was imported.
Correct.
It's good enough for there, but it's not good enough for Just confused. I mean, if it's
I have pulled some with the applicants, space in the air buildings and Astro. Um, on ten thirty-six, the fill that was there, it's, it's not, it's not actively filled. There had been in the past some fill that was brought, but that didn't have the burden of the intake protocol that's on sixty-four Cambridge Drive.
So what's the difference between that fill there?
There's asphalt in it and that's not something that's with the intake protocol and the conditions of approval with the existing permit on sixty-four Cambridge.
So that's why it's not on Cambridge?
Right.
That's all I was asking. Pretty simple question. Appreciate it. The well system to rehydrate the, um, the wetlands. How is, how is that water getting in there? Just because I don't know anything about wells.
Ground.
Correct. Is it, it's being pumped, but is it a hose? Is it a piping? Is it?
There would be, there would be pumps, PVC pipes and discharged into this well system.
So you're taking groundwater from that area?
Correct.
Wherever it's coming from in that area? And it's being discharged through a pipe into certain sections and that's how you're going to rehydrate?
That's right.
Okay. And you said those, those pumps will be obviously maintained by the guy, whoever owns the property at this moment? And once you build, they're going to be connected to the building somehow, some way? So we know
They'd be wired back into that building system, yes.
I did not listen to the wetlands meeting. What was their take from your opinion? So now, listen, you guys are both going to have opinions, right? So you're going to have one, you're going to have one, and I know somewhere in the middle is the truth. I just want your opinion. What was your take from the wetlands on the well? Rehydrating?
I, I, I think there was, I, I think the reluctance was the maintenance and how to ensure maintenance and how to ensure inspections and funds available to repair if need. That was, that was kind of what I gathered from some of the main concerns. Later in the hearing, one of the commission members said, well, can we do this now and then also still try to bring in fill if we can modify the strategic requirements? Um, which, which was, you know, the first time that was kind of mentioned in, in public hearings for that application. Uh, but I think it was really just a general, uh, you know, reluctance because this isn't a normal way of dealing with this type of issue.
Sure. And I'm a little concerned about being able to build currently on it. They say everything, say it all goes and we say, hey, we're going to go ahead and give you an S C P, you could close your fill permit. I'm a little concerned that, uh, that you're only eleven feet away from, from groundwater. Especially when you still have, how many feet do you have to go height-wise to, to get to where it was to restoration?
Uh, it would be another
Roughly. Not holding you to an exact one.
Another forty feet, roughly.
So I think like in, just looking at things, I think even if you went up another, I would feel more comfortable if you went up another fifteen, twenty feet, even if you ask for half the distance or something. And I do agree with you, those rock wall structures are, they exist everywhere, no matter where you go, the, you can see them and especially in this town and many, many, many other towns. I noticed them in Oxford, Newtown, and so on, so forth. They're everywhere. My concern is eleven feet from the water table is kind of, to me, I feel is kind of cutting it close.
Well, I'll, I'll just, I'll just say to that, there's actually very shallow groundwater throughout the town and Connecticut and different parts of
Sure there is.
Even in Monroe, right? There's often times, I think this commission is probably familiar, many applications where groundwater is three feet down and you have to do, you have to import fill because you have to put septic system in the proper separation or floor mark system in the proper separation. Many basements are built below the water table and have permanent some pumps are there. So, so, well, I understand it, I just wanted to offer some color that I do think that, that eleven feet to groundwater is, is considerably deeper than, um,
But we're not talking about all of the other properties in town. I'm more concerned
Offering some
Understand. That's, I mean, that's just me speaking. On a side note, I think what has been done from your pictures just seems outstanding. I think the work, you guys have definitely improved this property a thousand times over. I'm, I'm glad you were able to restore the wetlands and, and fill up as much as you can so far, but in my opinion, I still think you guys could fill a little bit more. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayini. Commissioner Westland.
So I would tend to think the type of development that you guys are going to be anticipating would be on a slab type structure, correct? How deep would that go into this eleven feet?
Uh, typical footing depth is about four and a half feet.
Four and a half feet? Now, I'm just going to ask you to bring me up to speed on a couple of things there. Um, right now, there's no, pretty much no gravitational sheath flow of, of rainwater going into those wetlands.
I think, if I remember correctly, um, there were a previous watershed of about ten eight acres, like two acres left.
Okay, so it's two when there was ten. So how long has it been since you've pumped water out there? Or are you still doing that?
No, we, we, we pumped while the, while the active moving of material on site was taking place, we pumped for, um, probably around nine months. Um, and that following spring, the, you know, our soil scientist was able
Last spring?
Day, end of spring, the, the soil scientist was able to find egg masses in there, um, to, to show that that rehydration was effective.
When I walked the site, I believe it was around that time and, uh, we didn't see a rehydration or a restoration at the level of the pictures that are shown today. You know, there was definitely not standing water like that. There was the soil, the ground was wet, but it wasn't standing water. So I'm wondering, so basically the two acres that you're talking about has, has been the contributing factor to rehydrating and, and restoring those wetlands at this point?
At, at this immediate point, yes, because it was not pumped this spring. Part of the, um, part of the challenge was, and I had a, I worked forward, let's go back to it. The commission may remember, some of the commission may remember that there was a, a section four subdivision approved, I believe in two thousand and sixteen, which essentially established and created the cul-de-sac at the end of Cambridge Drive. Um, while that project was being completed, that's been fully completed in accordance with its approvals and Diaz Belt submitted, I believe, town council is probably still working on getting the acceptance of that formally. But as part of that finalization and the fact that there was an activity as the utility companies were installing their utilities to close this out, they essentially turned power off to the property. So, um, there was another smaller well on the site near the old scale house that, um, was used for a period of time, but it turned out that it was shallow and the pump didn't really have sufficient, uh, power to actually pump that as an extended, for an extended time. Um, so when the power was turned off, that, that pumping had ceased. So it was not pumped this spring.
And those pictures were from this spring?
They were. They may have been the, the wetland system to the east. Those may have been actually in these fertile pools which watersheds weren't impacted because that's fed from this.
Right. Now, again, just a, a, a round number here with the, the amount of grade change that you've obtained on that site, how many cubic yards do you kind of estimate were brought in at this point?
The, 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 most of the material that was moved, the vast majority of it was material that was onsite. I believe there was seventy cubic yards imported.
Okay, so you really don't know how much was?
I believe about seventy cubic yards was actually sourced and brought in.
But you don't know how much was needed to kind of fill that back in as far as what was in piles on the site?
I, I do, there was two hundred and approximately two hundred and thirty-nine thousand yards of materials.
Okay.
I replaced two packings.
About fifty percent of what's required going forward.
Correct.
Um, I realize the state of Connecticut uses millings and, and other, um, you know, uh, type of fill that has asphalt fragments and pieces in, um, I just don't know what their standard is in, in wetlands areas. Can, do you have any, anything to add to that? Like, you know, they're putting on ramps on highways and that kind of thing. You always see millings, they're always all over the place. I just don't recollect seeing that being used near wetlands.
Well, we don't, we're the, we're not opposing millings for one.
Right.
There's a, there's a difference between millings and, you know, asphalt fragments which come as you're demoing a, a highway and excavating through pavement. Um, so, but I don't think the state of Connecticut, when they're doing a construction project, pays any attention to proximity of the systems around.
That's interesting. And I guess my last question is, you know, how can you, you know, quantify the necessary water capacity to replicate the seasonal rain flow that that particular site had become accustomed to seeing before the, uh,
So we, we, so we're in conjunction with our soil scientists, we looked at the overall watershed, the ground cover, the forest as well, and the average annual rainfall over previous ten years to what that volume was. We looked at month variations, month, you know, seasonal variations. And then basically they, they established part of the submission, wetlands commission a pumping schedule where essentially pumps fifteen gallons per minute, um, through three pumps. Um, and that would run essentially for nine months. And that basically runs from like September through April.
Okay, so it doses, so it, it won't, it won't deplete the, the well that, that it's in, hopefully, I mean.
Correct. I mean, it's part of a very vast
Engineering process, yeah. Um, something else just came to me, ran away.
Catch it.
Yeah. That is probably it. Um, yeah, that's it. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Mayini got one other question?
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So you needed four hundred and fifty-three yards or you
Four hundred and ninety-three thousand yards left required
To fill.
To meet the conditions of
On top of the two hundred and some you
That was, that was correct.
So you still need four hundred and ninety?
Ninety thousand yards.
Thank you.
A couple of indications for some of the questions both by Commissioner Westland. Just want to make sure everyone's clear that there are four wetland fertile pool complexes on this property. Only one was impacted by the excavation, that's wetland fertile pool two. So one, three, and four are still functioning, but so just want to make sure everybody knows that. And two, you know, it's interesting, we, we did meet with N W N's last night and, uh, as we were leaving, our soil scientist, Bill Kenny, said, do you need me tomorrow night before planning zoning? And we, we said, no, we don't think so, you know, that's, um, but, uh, Mr. Kenny did do a report, uh, that, uh, describes the rehydration, describes the project and, uh, that was submitted to N W N's and I think, uh, with your permission, will submit it to this commission so you, you can read it for, for yourself.
Is this, is this area considered the headwaters for the aquatic?
I don't know the answer to that. Yes, it is part of the
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ambrose, you have one other question?
Just keep asking.
Did wetlands two be hydrated right now?
Uh, at this very moment, no. And that was why we went back before, was wanted to put this permanent well situation.
How long has that been down?
He was last pumped, um, not this spring, but previous spring, so last spring, some windows.
It's been over a year?
Yes.
So there's been no hydrating in that wetland at all?
Uh, the applicant said there was some
Was some what?
There was some pumping this spring.
Well, the picture you showed looked, you said was from this spring.
Right.
And it looks
As you see
Pretty hardy.
That was, that was the wetland system to the east. So that's not
That was not number two?
I think it was actually this, looking at these pictures from the photos we're taking.
That's not the wetlands two?
Correct.
And I did, I did sit in the wetlands meeting last night. I also was part of the site walk, uh, that went around. I did not see standing water in fertile pool two for what we could see from where we were at. Um, however, I'm not a wetland soil scientist, but I am a licensed landscape architect. It is greatly improved from my understanding of what it was before. Um, I asked the same question that Commissioner Ambrose asked about, um, the lack of pumping last night and, um, the lack of pumping currently and what were the potential risks to the wetlands for that to continue to not be pumped? He said, in this current season, it's not an issue at the moment because you're really building up the hydration in the wetlands over the time period that they're talking about. So fall, winter, and early spring. So he said, the goal though is to get it back to being hydrated by early fall in order to prep the wetlands for breeding season in the spring. Um, so he had felt that there wasn't, you know, the wetlands were in such poor shape as they were, they've already made, you know, great progress. He wasn't quite sure about the success of this past breeding season because there wasn't as much hydration last year because of the lack of pumping. Um, but then, you know, emphasized the importance of getting something for hydration in place before this fall to prep for breeding season next year.
So I'm confused then because you said that you, they saw growth and they're seeing
Last spring. So not this spring, but last spring I saw egg masses in twenty twenty-three.
So it hasn't been examined this spring?
It was examined this spring and there wasn't evidence of egg masses this spring because of the lack of hydration.
Kedok. Commissioner Rufo.
And why was the pumping stopped from last year? If it was working, why was that halted?
Part of it was the, the, the pumping had been taking place as part of the deep watering efforts while the fill was being placed.
Yeah.
Um, and then once the subdivision cul-de-sac was finished, the power company turned off the power to the site. There was no water to pump. And there was, yeah. And, and the, the deeper reaches that where the water was available was without the installation of new pumps. And we can't even install new pumps until we have a permit to then go apply to put those pumps in through, through D P H.
You went to my next question. Okay, thank you. Um, but I do want to say the rest of the property looks great, um, compared to what I'm doing my site walk, I can't believe it was twenty twenty-three. Um, so, I mean, great job bringing it in, leveling it off. I have three questions and two might seem very silly, but I just feel like I want these answers. Um, can we get an expert? I know you have many in your
It's a big
Pocket. Um, to speak on, you know, their recommendations of the height of the water table to where the building should be. I know Commissioner Westland mentioned like the, was it, the foundation was four feet[1788.03] I know Commissioner Westland mentioned, like, was it, the foundation was four feet under? And Bruno mentioned, you know, the eleven feet. Where is that optimal sweet spot of where are we getting too close, right? If we could figure out, I don't know. I don't know if anyone on here knows what's too close to a water table to build. I would just like to know.
There is no.
There is no?
I was saying, my.
We can go as close as we want and.
I think it's two inches above the water table. So some pumps.
Yeah, there, there, yeah, there are a lot of, there are a lot of buildings that are built.
We don't need that. Is there any opportunity to move material from another part of the site to this area to help build that up?
Um, not to achieve the elevations required to rehydrate.
Would it help us get any higher to get to that forty, to have less than that forty feet difference we're at?
The, the challenge is that would have to introduce blasting.
Okay. So there's no other area we could take fill without blasting and move it over there to build it up?
Um, I can certainly study it.
Just wondering.
Try to.
Trying to help think about how we could use what's there.
Yeah.
To help build that up instead of trying to find this clean fill that seems to be difficult to find.
Right.
Okay. And I just feel it's going to become a he said, she said. I'm hearing there's clean fill available. I'm hearing you've tried it, there is none. Is there any way to provide any proof that, you know, you have reached out, there is no clean fill, just to show us that there really is none? I feel like we're going to hear from the other side that there is clean fill available, they called someone, there's clean fill. I just want to make sure if that, that's fine. I just want to figure that out.
I, I can speak to that.
Just need name and name again.
Yeah, also with the applicant. I can speak to that. The, so, so when you go look for, we get calls, we'd be getting calls in, and the first thing we'd ask is, is it clean? Well, it's got a few things here that we can see some asphalt. Basically, it's not worth even testing, right? It's, you just hang up and you go to the next. So we go out somewhere, you can actually see the stuff. We went to New Haven, to a big construction site there, and you can see fragments of asphalt in there. So it automatically disqualified. That was, you know, by tens of, maybe fifty thousand yards.
They couldn't screen it up?
It, it's just everywhere, throughout the whole thing, and they just want to get rid of it, so.
They didn't have a screener on site?
They had, but it's within each one, they, they just wanted to get rid of it. So they were just looking.
I understand, but if they wanted to get rid of it, you could screen it to help get rid of it.
I, I think it's more complicated. I mean, they, they just want to dump it, they don't want to screen it, or they just want to, they're going to go on to the next one, say, hey, can you go? They'll just make the next one.
Somebody's going to take it, I understand.
So it's, so it's hard to, 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 to get proof of something that's not there, right? It's just, it's just not there. And it's automatically disqualified, so there's no written record of it to say, you know, that it's not there, it's just, you know, it doesn't pass the first blush, and that's been very, very frustrating. So hopefully that answers your question.
And how far out do you guys look? I mean, how far out in the area are you guys calling?
Well, it's limited by, by distance, right? Like, New Haven is out, we go beyond the state, but most people like to get rid of the closer because if they're paying for the truck, they don't want to go that far. So they're going to look fairly locally, but we cast as broad as that as we can and we look at it with, you know, they know we're looking for it. And, you know, we've had stuff as far away as, I think it was in New Jersey, I think, even New Jersey, and that was really not clean, so that was all the thing.
We don't need any New Jersey.
Yeah, it's just.
They can keep it, they can keep it in Jersey.
It's going.
Okay.
So hopefully that answers your question.
Okay. Yeah, those are all my questions right now. Thank you.
Before we go to the public, do you have anything Kathleen to add?
Um, I just, our town engineer, James De Mayo, could not be on tonight, but he has been trying to simultaneously do both planning and zoning comments and inland wetland comments during the inland wetland review because if he has comments, it doesn't make sense to reserve them until they come to here, if they have the opportunity to go to it. So he's been working through those. We did just get a submission yesterday, so neither he nor I have had a chance to look at the resubmission, which I think addresses many of his comments in his most outstanding comment letter. What I would draw your attention to, and I know some of this has been slightly updated, is he gave an overall engineering concerns and thoughts for the commission at the end of his memo, which was, was proposing to leave the existing rock faces some range from ten to thirty feet in height. There is a concern with the safety of vehicles along Independence Drive as well as pedestrian safety for individuals who enter the property. The, and I do believe maybe some of this has been addressed in last application, but the applicant is looking to leave the site very close to existing conditions with some minor modifications. Could be considered a pad-ready site. Steep slopes, rock cuts, and other site conditions in which they are proposing are all acceptable during the site development, application, and proposal. Access to four Independence Drive is a concern as, as the, if the application, as if the application gets approved and the lots get sold, then there's currently no reasonable access to the lower pad. So have you had a chance to think or respond to those as part of this last application?
We, we did, we, we did respond as part of our application. Do have a potential development plan, which shows how the site could be developed if it was approved in the current application, that shows a large structural building on specifically Cambridge, smaller structural building on four Independence. Even if they exist in grades, we can still provide access to a development on four Independence. So we do believe that that's, there are ways to do that as part of future applications. And just to address the other comment regarding, you know, safe protection from Independence, I just want to point out that that rock face is, you know, over forty feet away from the room. There is a fence there now. There's also a berm that's at least six to eight, sixty feet tall. So we don't believe that fall protection or particular protection is really warranted as well beyond the limit of a clear zone that DOT establishes as part of their hard design manual. But we do believe that access could be provided, it would just need to be done and approved because there would be excavation and filling associated with that, but, you know, that's all dependent on a future application.
All right, let's go to the public if there's any.
I have one, I have one more question.
Yes.
Sorry. I know, if, if I'm remembering correctly, last time we talked about this, there was another option of putting some sort of, you call it a bladder or some fabric down to protect the water table. This way you could use the asphalt fill. Am I remembering?
We were, we were proposing, once we got previous application, once we got a certain elevation, we were going to put a liner below the last five or six feet of fill, just to provide additional protections, was it each, or about fifty percent of the, so that any migration of groundwater down through that thing. So, you know, I think that's something that's, that would be, you know, primarily that's part of future development.
So if you, let's just say we put the liner down where it is now, and then, you know, we, we take the restrictions off and you let, you use the asphalt fill.
Right, it's clean fill.
Clean fill. Would that protect the groundwater?
If.
Is that a viable option?
Certainly something we need to evaluate as part of.
Green?
Yeah, just briefly. I don't, I don't want to, again, Joel Green, I don't want to get into a lot of back and forth.
No, we're not going to.
I know, and I appreciate that. It's not a pleasant, look, my client, my client's motivation is just to make sure that the watershed is clean, that his property is developable without any issues. In terms of, you know, my client's view of what's happened here, my client, my, my client's big objection was he thought that the site should be restored to where it was before this violation occurred and not to allow the applicant to basically take the situation and then come to a billable lot and not address, really truly address the violation. But we are where we are. My client would like to see more testing. My client believes that there are inappropriate materials in the ground. I'm not looking for attorney Ben to get up before he was ready for testing. I know, I, I've heard it all, that WSB were testing. We would suggest that there are some indications of issues, but here we are.
Let's go back.
Right, so here we, so here we sit. The whole starting point for this discussion and the whole driver on this discussion is a claimed lack of fill. Once again, we think the issue is economically motivated, and the applicant doesn't have to fill the rest of it, obviously, it's to their economic benefit, and that's why we're all here. So, and I, I refer you to staff, I urge you to watch the inland wetlands proceedings last night. I think sensibly inland wetlands said, we need to see more about this fill issue and the availability of fill, and we need a more robust record on what the true state of affairs is with respect to the availability of fill. And potentially, if there's a discussion to be had on easing the protocol on intake, that, once again, just respectful of the environmental issues, then maybe they'll look at that. And I think my client and I agree that that is a sensible approach. So one, let's investigate the fill issue that is triggering this whole discussion. And two, if there's a discussion to be had about the intake fill protocol, to Commissioner May, May, on Mayini's point, if, you know, eleven years or nine years or eleven years in an expendable time, I mean, that's what was originally contemplated anyway. I believe it was ten years we were talking about. So maybe in a year or two years, maybe fill is abundantly available. That's, that's the point. And, and the commission did, the wetland commission did discuss potentially a hybrid where we are pumping into the wetland and kind of keeping an eye on this thing and seeing what the fill situation is going forward. It doesn't have to be, you don't have to go to a, like a final disposition right now. It can be a wait and see, and that's kind of respectful of where we've been. That's all.
All right, thank you, Attorney Green. Let's go to the public. If there's anyone here that would like to address the commission on this application, please raise your hand. If there's anyone online that would like to address the commission on this application, please press your raise my hand button. You'll see that, right, Kathleen?
Yeah, it should, it's a new system tonight, so I think it's still functioning the same way, but I don't see anything on my end.
All right. Okay, it doesn't look like there's anything from the public. So then we'll go back to the commissioners before we adjourn this hearing for tonight and conclude it for tonight. Any commissioners have any other questions?
I'm good.
Good.
Okay. Does the applicant have any closing remarks?
I'm not sure of the procedure, and obviously it would take both commissions to agree to have, you know, maybe, but it might be helpful if you all are going to reject that possibility out of hand or whether it's something you might be interested in having Kathleen explore about the possibility of a joint lead between both commissions, which I, as I said, I think would be more efficient.
Well, I think there's separate issues, to tell you the truth. That's why it was set up this way. The inland wetlands, if they approve the pumping and then that's fine, then we'll look at the fill.
So I think with all respect, I think these things are almost inextricably intertwined. They're certainly intertwined because, as I said, in order to do the renovation project, we need an excavation fill permit from you. You control the type of fill that can be used. That impacts the wetland application. We go into wetland saying, we don't think we can get the fill. They want additional evidence about that. But if we come back to them and establish that we really can't beat the protocol that's been placed by you in the existing permit, then you're going to have to just, if you, if you decide we're not going to change that protocol, that's highly relevant to what we say to inland wetlands or the discussion before, so.
I understand what you're saying. Let's have, we'll have Steph and we'll talk about that offline.
Very good.
I will tell you that my, my concern is, and my only concern is, and I want to talk to our legal counsel about it, is, you know, I understand what is all being said, however, they are both two separate approval bodies. So inland wetlands is not approving something contingent on what planning and zoning feels and, and vice versa. Like, they still have to make their own independent decisions based on their own regulations and statutes that they're held to. So I do want to make sure that even if we were to do this, we do need to be thoughtful about the scope, and at the end of the day, it can be kind of fact finding and things like that, but at the end of the day, there's, you're both still making two separate.
We can make a determination before inland wetlands closes their hearings, and then they'll see what we've decided before they close, and we'll just leave ours open until that point.
Okay, I mean, I, I, I wholeheartedly agree that there are two applications, one planning before inland wetlands and one planning, planning before planning and zoning, concerning the exact same project, right? And, but I don't question for a second that you would each have to deliberate on your own application separate from one another. But in terms of all the facts and what's going to satisfy one condition, one commission versus the other, I, I do think this makes sense, and while I've never done it, I believe there is definite provisions or precedents where in a certain circumstances like this, where there is joint leading between two commissions. And I, I would encourage Kathleen to check with legal counsel, I will do some checking, but there is a precedent for it, there's, there's reasons for that, and there are circumstances where it makes sense.
Thank you.
Would you like me to, at the very least, just explore?
Yeah, we'll explore it.
The possibility of how that could happen if we so choose.
Okay, Mr. Soli, anything else?
I appreciate the discussion, Sue.
All right, then we'll continue this hearing until our next meeting.
Our next meeting is going to be on June fifth, so this is a continued hearing to the June fifth meeting, which is in three weeks, not two, because there are five Thursdays in May.
I'm going to miss you guys.
It's just a little bit of a weird month, especially since we'll be getting to the June fifth meeting.
Going to miss you guys.
All right, great. Kathleen, you want to go ahead with S U B twenty twenty-five dash O two, file number one two seven nine, seven oh nine slash seven three three, Monroe Turnpike.
This is a solely private?
Guys, it's not easy.
We're doing any?
No.
This is our project.
Town.
Oh, town project.
This is town, trying to get that property over.
This one over here.
His name's on it.
His name's on it.
Yeah, they, we hired them to do the survey work for us because we obviously.
They're working for us now.
Because we obviously can't do it in-house.
But he's not, he's not representing, right?
The, I, or the town's still the applicant. All right. Kevin Gallagher, planning and zoning for the town of Monroe. The town of Monroe recently acquired the previous St. Jude School parcel with the intention of it becoming a community center with some town of Monroe office spaces. The same lot was in front of you for a change of use application just last month, which was approved. When we acquired, when we proceeded with the purchase of the property, we had to come up with a, a way to purchase the property on our own. So we couldn't just purchase a property that didn't have property lines associated with it, some of that was just part of somebody else's property. So what we did at that time is we did a lot line adjustment. The lot line adjustment was able to take the existing property between the St. Jude Education Building, future community center parcel, and the town of Monroe Library parcel. The lot line that was between those two properties, we did a lot line adjustment and we moved it out to include the limits of where our proposed purchase was at that time. So when we purchased the property, we were able to just combine it automatically with the town of Monroe owned library parcel, which gave us the legal avenue in order to do that. Now, to the point where we'd like to subdivide the property so that the community center can be its own individual lot and can be separate from the library parcel. We are applying for a traditional subdivision, going through the subdivision procedures for it as we traditionally would. In order to do that, it's not a resubdivision, and this was not part of the subdivision in the past, so it would just be a traditional subdivision. As part of that, we do not have the available land for the fifty percent required open space, so we are asking for a waiver for the open space requirement in general. We are not asking for a payment in lieu of for another property. We are asking for a full waiver of the open. space requirements. Also, we received variances for Lot 2, which is the community center parcel, prior to applying for this application, I think in December of 2023. However, we did not anticipate doing the lot line adjustment at that time with the library parcel. That was something that came to fruition earlier this year. So now that we're subdividing the library parcel, the library parcel has several non-conforming conditions that are existing in its previous state when it was its own individual lot, which includes the lot coverage. It's in an R1 zone, so it's 50% total lot coverage, as well as the landscaping buffers. However, we are not proceeding with a variance for those because in May of 2024, town council had voted to exempt the Town of Monroe properties from its zoning regulations, which would allow us to apply that exemption to this portion of it. We're not applying that exemption to the subdivision. We're still doing the traditional subdivision, but we are applying to that one portion of the item. With that being said, as part of the application, all referrals have to go to the Conservation and Water Resource Commission. They only meet once a month, so the timing of when the application was submitted and then meeting schedule unfortunately did not line up. So we were not able to get their comments before this meeting, so we do have to wait until their June meeting to get comments. The exemption will sunset clause, so it will expire May 28 of this month. So we are going to town council. We are asking for an extension of that exemption until the end of July. And if that's granted, we will actually be asking for us to hold off on voting on this until the July meeting at that time.
Cool.
Any questions from the commission, please?
Very nice. Thank you.
Because this is non-conforming, one of the conditions of the town council exemption was that this is a public hearing. We have noticed this as a public hearing. So we do need to open it up to the public at this time.
At this time?
Jump back.
We're going to go ahead and open this to the public. If there are any members of the public online, please raise your hand if you'd like to address the commission on this application.
I see none.
For the record, there are no members of the public in attendance. Do the commissioners have any questions? No.
No.
No questions from the commissioners?
This will be continued as the public hearing to the June 5th meeting. At that time, I can give an update of what happened with town council, and then we will move on next.
Okay. So let's move on. No deliberations or determinations. We do have some new applications that Kathleen can fill us in on. There's one listed here, 707, and then there's.
707, Main Street is an amendment to an existing application to SEP, a special exception permit 202304A1. If you remember, that came in for a change of use for a place of worship and a commercial portion of the building. It was a 9,000 square foot building. It's the tan one with the blue on top. They are coming in for a full place of worship use. They are getting rid of the commercial use and then coming in for that. So they have received my preliminary comments. I have a couple items for that, so I'm hoping we get another resubmission before June 5th. But that will be coming in. Public hearing will be opened on.
The same, what does it say, Temple on it or something? Is it the same?
No, they had some very sad unforeseen circumstances after they got the permit. And so I believe it might be the same applicant, but they're not going to be the occupiers of the space in this finality. The second one is SUB 202503. This is 2 Victoria Drive. 2 Victoria Drive in front of inland wetlands right now for the proposed development of a daycare center. As part of that, they are also looking to subdivide the property. It is a re-subdivision. 2 Victoria was previously subdivided from 10 Victoria. So 10 Victoria was one large lot. It was subdivided into 10 Victoria, which became the Amazon facility, and 2 Victoria, which is currently a vacant piece of property. They are looking to subdivide 2 Victoria into two lots. It's a re-subdivision, so that will also be open for a public hearing on 6/5/25.
The O.A. soccer, please?
Across the street from it.
Okay, we have our meeting minutes from 5:125 before us. Chelan, Tan, a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve. Meeting minutes from 5:125 is drafted.
Motion by Maene. Second by Westland. Do we have any changes, discussion, comments? If not, all the favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? None, then it's passed. We have commission reports. I have no report. Did any of the other commissioners have any reports? Okay, then we do have land use staff reports.
Is, is more items and reports?
Items, correct.
Yes. If you remember, for those of you that sit on the regulation subcommittee, 1603 Monroe Turnpike, which is the Mondo property, came before you for a pre-application. At that time, it was discussed that site visit may be wanted by members of the commission prior to that application coming in. So you kind of had your head wrapped around the way the site looked currently. There is existing violations on site, both for wetlands and for zoning. They came in and offered basically any time that the commission wants. They're happy to schedule that. So I didn't know if we, it's been raining a lot the last two weeks, so it wasn't a high priority. But now that hopefully the rain's going to break a little bit, unless the case, I'd like to schedule that meeting. Kind of great. We could do that either tonight or coordinate offline. I did send a meeting. I didn't hear any responses, so.
Well, that's one issue I'd like to address. Kathleen doesn't, I mean, I don't look at the Monroe email very often. I don't think anybody does. Do we want to give Kathleen a private email so she can let us know, so we can actually?
Yeah, you already did that.
I found my address.
Yeah, all right.
Let me give you my private email.
I'll thank you, mine.
Let's all do that.
Yes.
I'm happy to do that. So send me an email. It won't go on a, like a, I mean, if someone's FOI is an email, they'll be able to see what your private email is, but we won't put it on the master list. I'll just use it on my circulation list. And honestly, I'll probably keep your other emails still on there, so it'll go to both. So, if that happens, please let me know.
I'm going to check out town on.
Oh, yeah. Send me your email. Do you want to schedule the?
Want us to text you?
How's some of the papers down?
Email you.
Email me the emails. Just email me something from the email, too. Like, that works, too.
What address?
At Monroe. Gallagher.
At Monroe.
At MonroeCT dot com.
We will all do that.
That's fine. Do we want to schedule a site walk though for 1603?
Yes.
They truly were like any, they'll make themselves.
I can't do Wednesday.
How close are they to coming before, I said, before inland wetlands?
I talked to them a couple weeks ago, and I thought they were a month or two out. They said they're in progress. They are updating the drawings, you know, at the moment.
Before inland wetlands?
They also have a comment. They also have a conceptual plan that adjusted the wall the way that it was discussed, that they said they're happy to submit for this site walk as well. So do you guys have it while you're walking around?
Yeah, well, let's do it when, I don't know.
Figure out.
It's got to drive.
As soon as you can, do Wednesdays.
Okay, so we're going to say Tuesday or Thursday?
That'd be fine.
Tuesday or Thursday afternoon. We're trying to do like four?
Let's check, let's check Mike's vacation schedule first.
I'm going to be gone for the rest of the month.
Okay, so not Thursday afternoons?
Don't, don't base it on me. I just can't do.
So maybe Tuesday afternoons, maybe?
Late.
Yeah, Tuesday afternoons.
Late.
Later.
Later. Yeah, because daylight outmount till 8 o'clock, so.
Understand that, but staff's been doing a lot of site walks after hours, and it's, it's.
We do it June the 2nd? That would be prior to our next meeting. It's a Monday.
That's, that looks good for me.
I'm on it.
We could.
In second?
June the 2nd. However, if I have quorum, I have to notice that there's a special meeting, even though there's not an application. You guys are meeting on a potential.
See, that works for them. They can text us, right?
Yeah.
Kathleen, what time works best for you?
We could do it in two times. That's a potential.
Then I have a quorum.
Yeah, so you have a tentative date.
All right. So we'll do a tentative date. Let me reach out to them, see if that works, and we'll do late afternoon. We have not scheduled.
No, okay.
That is actually two items to handle. All right, beautiful. The next item, and I, this is just a one piece of paper, so I didn't put it in your package because I don't want you to lose it, is my request for assistance from this commission on interpreting, if anybody remembers, on past precedent of how we have handled labeling a lot, not a building lot, as part of a subdivision. So this is an excerpt from the subdivision regulations. This is section 111-304C, Lot Quality, which states, "The lots shall be of such character that they can be used for building purposes without danger to the health and safety of the public or the occupants. Any lot which is found to be unsuitable for buildings by reasons of water or flooding conditions, unsuitable soil, topography, ledge, rock, or other conditions shall be combined with another lot that is suitable, or shall be marked 'not a building lot' on the final map until necessary improvements to the lot have been made and approved by the commission." We have a potential subdivision coming in that has met with us for pre-application, and it's a two-lot subdivision. One of the lots is a buildable lot. It has existing structures on it, a septic system. And so that lot would be subdivided. The second lot is vacant land. However, they would like to voluntarily note it as not a building lot. However, they have no reasoning for why it is, does not comply with being health and safety, you know, to the public of occupants. You know, any lot which is found to be unsuitable by reasons of water, flooding, unsuitable soils, topography, ledge, rock, or other conditions. They don't have a reasoning of, like, why it's not a building lot. They
Not giving us a reason then.
They would just prefer to mark it as not a buildable lot, and then if they want to build it in the future, they'd always have, they would have to do the test holes for the septic, and they would have to build it out. They said that that has been practiced in the past in town.
Who are they?
A local surveyor. A local surveyor that has done a lot of surveying work in town, has said that that has been practiced in town in the past, where they've been able to just voluntarily put not a building lot, and then they will come in in the future for it. That's not the way I personally read this. I read.
Let everyone know the reasons they want to do this.
What are the reasons?
To save money on not taxes.
Because you don't, then they don't have to do all the test holes and hire a consultant to show you a conceptual plan that it's a, you know, building lot. It's a work. It's work to do a full subdivision application and to prove out that both lots are building lots.
Have tax implications.
Any of these, any of these standards, I don't see how we could mark it as a not a building lot.
Which is currently my interpretation. However, they had requested that because that's not the way the town has done it in the past, to come to the commission and ask if you guys have precedent and disagree with my interpretation.
I don't have precedent, but I agree with your statement like that. Trust me, it's just.
Do we have proof that we've done this in the past?
They have not submitted anything to me. Now, this actual same lot, a portion of it, they have designated as not a building lot in the past.
It's on the record.
And yes, but not, there's no reasoning on the record of why it was done. I was just told one of the past planning zoning administrators to permit them to do it, or town planner. I don't know what they're talking about.
So they're doing it for tax reasons, then?
They didn't explicitly say that. They didn't explicitly say it was for economic reasons, but I, obviously, it's more work to prove it out.
Or to save the work.
I know, but it's still raw land. There's nothing to push me from. No, I think, but I know, I know that. I know it's worth it, but if there's no.
No, that's, that's true. The assessor will take subdivision application approvals, any approval, into consideration when he assesses the property. No, Commissioner Ambrosi is absolutely correct that that is taken into consideration for tax assessment.
He has to show us precedence.
Okay. That you're willing to think about it if he shows a precedent. Okay, I will tell that to him. Beautiful. Next item, can we schedule subcommittee? I have one potential person on it. We don't have a super heavy agenda, but it has a ten minutes.
So we don't yell at us this time?
We get yelled at all. For you, Kathleen.
Can we do June 9th? Monday?
Let's see.
Can I have one Monday off?
I thought Kathleen liked Mondays.
We site walk June 9th.
Uh, we can do June 9th.
I'm joking. That's a Tuesday.
Monday's the preferred day for you. I mean.
I just, I don't normally have meetings on Mondays, so that's why I know it's not going to double up with ARP or CBA. All right. See, we have that.
Sunday off.
So you only have.
I remember Saturday and Sunday off.
Like.
Yeah. Come on Monday, you'd be fresh.
Free night.
Good.
You're not all day and then.
Yeah, fresh.
5:30?
So, yeah, there's town council that night, but that's it. So we could, we could use wherever we need to, although I don't know, but so let's say the 9th at 5:30?
Yeah.
Yes.
Probably there. No. For then.
That's all I have?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Maene, second.